Good morning. Welcome to the Yuma Tilla County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is June. Today is June 4th. And we're glad everybody's here. The meeting is a public forum with a call-in option provided. And this meeting is being video and audio recorded with minutes being taken. The meeting is also being livestreamed. If you wish to speak to the board, please come to the podium, say your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes. And please share if you are speaking on the behalf of others. So, welcome everyone. Do we have any awards, recognitions, or correspondence?
First of all, I'd like to join Governor Kotek in declaring the month of June, Search and Rescue Month. Search and Rescue is a critical part of Yuma Tilla County's Sheriff's Office and by extension is a critical part from all corners of Yuma Tilla County, whether it be marine or in the forest, the snow or the ice. But Governor Kotek made this statement, "These volunteers are essential to emergency response in the wilderness, ensuring that anyone who explores Oregon's natural wonders returns home safely." I encourage everyone to get outside and discover, discover all our state has to offer. Remember to prepare, stay safe, be mindful of their impact on the communities you visit. One thing I would add to that, it's not just the wilderness in Yuma Tilla County. We have rivers that run all different directions that have their own challenges. But we've had search and rescue just here in the foothills too. So, thank you. I hope the Sheriff's Office can pass that on to your whole search and rescue team from all of us here on the dias and in Yuma Tilla County. It was great last year when we had the video for the month of June that they brought in. That was great. Also, on a sad note, very, very sad note, the Hermiston Police Department lost one of its finest last week. Brian Mace, all of Yuma Tilla County, the commissioners, and our heartfelt condolences to his family, to the police department of Hermiston and law, all of law enforcement in Yuma Tilla County. So, I want to note that.
He was actually, he was one of our, he worked for Yuma Tilla County Sheriff's Office for a while when he first came back from Fairview.
I did not know. That's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I cannot tell you how pleased I am that 4H is here today. And so, if they would like to come up. Good morning.
Good morning.
Can I sit in the slide deck?
I know all of you, but I am Courtney Walliser. I am the 4H agent for Yuma Tilla County. And I have officially been in my capacity for a year. And I want to share with you the wonderful things our kids here in Yuma Tilla County are doing. Can you advance the slide for me?
Real quick, you have a couple of people with you.
I do. I do. Let's introduce them. This is Lily Walder. Lily Walder is one of my standout 4Hers for the county. She is a member of my ambassador team, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about her experiences this year with 4H. And this is Katie Henning. Katie is also one of my standout 4Hers in the county. And I have many. This is not limited, but I have many. And Katie is going to share with you some of her experiences as well. The really exciting thing about these two girls is they have taken full advantage of the things that 4H has to offer outside of the county. So, they've done some traveling all over the U.S., which I'm really excited to have them share with you. And so, yeah, we will let them speak in just a few minutes. So, our current program data, we have 94 approved volunteers, and we have quite a few that are actually moving to be, go through the approval process. So, my goal for within the next year is to get well over 100. We have 463 club members, and these are traditional club members. And then, we have 72 Cloverbud members. So, we're pushing almost 600 kids that we see in our county, which is absolutely tremendous. And I'm really excited about these numbers. And as we become even, even more visible, we've gotten a lot more interest. So, I'm excited to see these numbers grow in the next couple of years. So, some things that are happening that we've started in the last year, we brought Yuma Tilla County ambassadors back. So, they're from across the county. There's 11 of them. They span from being 7th graders all the way through high school. They cover all species and project areas that we cover in Yuma Tilla County. They are incredibly visible, well-rounded young people. And I am so excited to have them at the helm of our program. We just started a monthly newsletter. One of my goals is to have better communication with our families and partners. And so, I have gotten wonderful feedback that people know what's going on. And so, then I can also showcase the great things our youth are doing across the county. We're also establishing community partnerships, which I think is essential because not all kids and youth participating in 4H have the, have the background that are agriculturally based, and a lot of them live in urban environments. And so, our goal is to be inclusive of all populations. And so, some of the ones we're currently working with, YMCA in East Yuma Tilla County has shown an interest, and so, we've partnered with them. Excuse me, Hermiston School District, we are going to do some stuff with their summer school, which is predominantly Spanish-speaking, and that's really exciting for me. Yuma Tilla School District, we're working with their high school age kids on building employability essential skills. And then, Pendleton Parks and Recreation to come in intermittently and provide programming for them. And so, regional partnerships, this is one I'm really proud of. A lot of our kids here in Yuma Tilla County cross borders. And so, one of the regional partnerships we just developed was with Wallowa County. We just partnered and did a huge livestock day with them. And then, we are also getting ready to partner with Moro County and do more with them. So, they're not just 4Hers in our county. They're 4Hers nationwide. And so, I'm really working hard to build that understanding.
That is amazing. And I love the fact, are you both ambassadors?
Yes, we are.
So, take advantage of that. My son was an ambassador, and he became a national ambassador for 4H as well. And so, he got to do some really cool things. But if you want to, I'd love to tell you more about it. I mean, or actually, he'll tell you more about it. But yeah, it's a great program, and I'm really glad you're doing it.
Okay, so these are your testimonials. This is Katie Henning, like explained, and Lily Walder. And they have shared some pictures with you, so I'm going to step aside and let them share their experiences.
Hi, my name is Lilian Walder. I'm from Athena, Oregon. And I'm an 8th grader from Weston Middle School. Most of you probably know me as the sheep girl, girl, or from the show ring. But this past year, I've had some pretty incredible opportunities through 4H that helped me realize it's not as much about animals and projects. 4H is really about growth and leadership and community. These sheep have been a gateway to so many new experiences. I used to be pretty shy, but wrangling 145-pound sheep in the show ring and giving the judge a death stare is pretty, a pretty good way to get over that. Showing has given me a lot of confidence and has helped me step outside my comfort zone. This year, 4H has opened the door to some amazing experiences. In March, I traveled to Washington, D.C. for the National 4H Ignite Conference. While I was there, I, I, I met young leaders from all over the state and even, and some leaders from Canada too. And yes, I may have mistaken Maine for our country. I attended inspiring workshops and got to explore the nation's capital. This was one of a very unforgettable experience, and it challenged me to be bold and grow. I also attended HLR, a leadership conference in Redmond, Oregon, where I gained more tools to become an even stronger leader. So, how am I bringing these experiences back to Yuma Tilla County? I've stepped up as a 4H ambassador, taken on leadership roles at my school, and become a mentor to younger showmen. I want to share the knowledge that others have poured into me and hopefully inspire and ignite the same passion in our local 4H community. I'm so grateful for these opportunities and the support that Yuma Tilla County has given me. Thank you.
I just want to say something here. If you have not watched it, watched, or had the opportunity to watch Lily's show, it is phenomenal. She is fun to watch, and it's an eye catcher in the show ring. It does a beautiful, beautiful job. And so, really talented.
Good morning. My name is Katie Henning. I'm a sophomore at Hermiston High School, and I've been in 4H for seven years. My main projects are goats, shooting sports, communications, and junior leader, and the junior leadership project. I've been in it for seven years, and it's taken me from Little, from Little County in Washington all the way to Washington, D.C., where I most recently spoke at the Smithsonian Institution of American, the American History Museum back there. When I first started 4H, I was very shy, very nervous. I was scared to talk to my project leader when I first started archery. And throughout, throughout my 4H years, I've had many good leaders like Courtney Walliser, Shana Newman, and many club leaders. Grow and learn, expand my skills as I've gone. Looking at that, I want to bring that forward to the next generation of 4H kids. Through that, I've taken on ambassador, ambassador leadership roles as well as leadership roles in our club, helping club members learn and grow, develop new skills, and complete community service projects. My community service project that I'm most proud of was doing a canned food drive for the Gapi House in Hermiston. We were able to raise 100 pounds of food, food that time. And I'm excited to bring that back as an annual tradition for our club. Looking forward to where I'm headed next with 4H. I'm going on, I'm here at Yuma Tilla County as an ambassador. And I'm also taking on state and national shooting sports ambassador roles this summer. Throughout 4H, it's been very instrumental to where I'm at today. Seven years ago, I would not have been able to speak in front of you, but here I am now. And I'm excited to bring that forward and represent 4H the best way I can. Thank you.
Katie, would you ever review? She is actually National Shooting Sports Ambassador. And if you haven't ever watched anybody on the backside of a bow, go watch Katie. Like, Henry was immediately enamored the minute the arrow slammed into the target. And so, then he tried to bamboozle his grandparents into buying him a bow and arrow. So, yeah, Katie is incredible to watch. Yes, it did work. Okay, Katie, advance first.
That's awesome.
One more. So, looking forward, what is our focus? Focus on longevity. How do we keep kids in the program for long-term? I think having kids at the helm like Katie and Lily are important. We can talk about opportunities that are greater than just Yuma Tilla County. What we do here is absolutely fabulous, and I want as many kids as possible. But I want them to see there are so many opportunities beyond our borders. I'm developing strong foundational programs and events countywide. And I think we're already doing that, just growing on those foundational programs. Sustainability, providing programs and events that are long-lasting. There's partnership with Wallowa County. I've already gotten feedback. They hope to continue that in the future. Moro County, same thing, like partnering with them and doing things that will continue into the future. Increased volunteer support and interest countywide, same thing. We're going to get out and about, talk to people, interact with the public and the communities, and try to garner even more support in the volunteer realm and even more interest with youth. And then, continued emphasis on working with youth in already existing environments. So, YMCA after-school programs. When I first went out to Yuma Tilla, I'll tell you this real quick. When I walked in, the kids actually called me the cow, pig, chicken, sheep lady. Like, these were high school kids that were like, "Yeah, no, like, we're okay." And then, I was there about a week. We did some, we called it in-service, but it was training on building employability skills. I am now taking five of these kids to summer conference. We're talking about kids that had closed doors. Like, they were like, "Yeah, I don't want anything to do with you. Like, you're, you're doing livestock and stuff like this. This is not us." I just had five of them sign up to go to summer conference. I'm so excited to take these kids. Like, they're getting on the bus. We're going to go. They're like, "She's a little nuts," but I mean, I think it's going to be fine. So, I'm thrilled where we're going. I'm thrilled where we've been, and I'm so excited for our future. So, thank you so much for supporting our program. I appreciate you.
Thanks, Courtney. The one thing I would like to say is, I've known Katie for a long time and watched her mature over the years into just an incredibly young woman. But Lily, watching you in the show ring, Mr. Timmons is totally correct. Courtney, thanks for the program. I, my shout-out really goes to parents and role models that help these kids. If you talk about little league parents, that's nothing compared to 4H parents.
Right.
As you do your ambassadorship and as you do your outreach, please, please don't forget to mention and say thank you to those parents and role models that have, that helped us get to where we are. I think 4H is probably one of the closest programs to my heart. I do have a question for both of you. Both of you participate in other organizations at school?
So, I'm a part of our leadership group. And then, I also, I also do sports.
Absolutely. And that's, I just wanted to kind of point that out. Katie, I know you do, so.
In high school, I'm an FFA, the National Honor Society, and most recently, the basketball and swim teams.
Incredible what your ambassadorship means, not just during 4H events, but through all of the different participation and participatory levels of your schooling. Congratulations. Nice program, Courtney. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you guys so much. Have a wonderful day.
Are you a trap shooter?
I don't shoot traps, but competitively, I do enjoy going out and just shooting traps for fun. I don't shoot.
I have big respect for people who can actually hit those things. So, yeah.
You need to come to the archery contest. The girls are phenomenal.
So, I spent nine years as a shooting sports instructor for Yuma Tilla County 4H. And we had a saying back then, it was, "We're not raising blue-ribbon shooters. We're raising blue-ribbon kids." And you two are perfect examples of exactly that. You know, it's, it's really something to see, you know, these, even the older kids, like, like you would be helping the younger kids who are just starting out, you know, watching them, help them achieve the success. So, thank you for being the ambassadors as you are.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to get a picture, okay, with the three commissioners. But I would also like, I know there's parents here. And just like Dan said, we need to celebrate and recognize the parents because parents are what make, I think, 4H a success. I think you're absolutely right. So, if you'll come up, your parents, and join us for a group photo, that'd be great.
Bob, give your phone to Megan. Give your phone to Megan, Bob.
Oh, Courtney, no, you're in here too.
Stand by your parent, Courtney.
Said that one? Okay.
Who has been or hasn't been?
Has.
Okay, who, who has been in 4H or has been a leader? Raise your hand. Oh, there's the group.
Okay.
Okay.
This is going to have to get a lot tighter than that. Don't ever wait. Just jump in, and they'll move you.
Okay.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Okay. Wow, good job.
So, I got to tell you a quick story. When I was, when, to become an instructor for 4H, we had to go through a class. And so, I was waiting in the mic. Okay. And you always think, "Okay, who's going to be the best shot here?" You know, my money was on the range instructor for Camp Arlia. Nope, it was an 18-year-old girl that just graduated high school. She cleaned all of her clocks. She had a scholarship, by the way, to Montana State, so.
She won't tutor on Horton, but I will. 2022, she was state pistol, small boy pistol, head hair pistol.
That's cool.
Thank you. Wow.
Awesome.
Good job.
Thanks a lot, Amy.
Thank you for tuning her board, by the way.
What a great way to start a meeting, huh? Okay. Let's see. A couple of minutes from a previous meeting, May 21, 2025?
Move approval. Second.
Then move in a second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Pronounce that.
Are there any additions to the agenda? Oh, not, that's not on the, okay. Public input and recognition of visitors. Wonderful visitors. So, we'll move down to our business items, budget adoption. I will move into a public hearing and move out of our regular meeting. Meeting is now open to the floor for public comment on our budget adoption.
The 2025-26 budget is before the board for adoption. The Budget Committee met and approved the draft before you. And so, today, you have the public hearing, and following the public hearing, the budget can be adopted. It's slightly more than last year, and it was the same tax rate.
Are there any comments? Questions? Okay, we will move out of public hearing and back into our regular meeting. Discussion.
Move to adopt budget order 2026-01.
I'd second thank the Finance Department for all their work on this budget and bringing it forward in a fiscally, fiscally conservative way that they did.
Moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Vehicle upfitting contracts.
A long walk, isn't it, LT?
Long walk.
Get the watch room, make sure everybody's in.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Roberts, Criminal Division Lieutenant, Yuma Tilla County Sheriff's Office. Before you today is a request to approve a contract for upfitting of our vehicles. As you recall, last month, you authorized us to go out for RFP. The Sheriff's Office received four responses to that. After reviewing the responses, we believe the best recommendation would be for elite upfitters out of Kepner to be awarded the contract. They have a similar turnaround time in terms of the builds as the next closest option. And they came in the lowest cost. So, the combination of that, we think that's a good recommendation to put forward. If you approve, I would stand for questions.
I would like to thank you for your due diligence on finding the best bang for your buck. And they worked really, really hard on that, and I appreciate it.
Move for approval, the award of the upfitting contractor to elite upfitters.
Been moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
You're here for a lot.
A few.
Sheriff Office purchase.
Hello, again, Commissioners, I have Detective Calvin Mead here to assist me with any technical questions that you might have in processes. But before you, is a request to purchase a digital forensics workstation for the Sheriff's Office. UCSO conducts a lot of investigations annually where we receive cellular devices. And we have to extract that information off of a cell phone and then compile it into usable information. What we ran into is our current computers, they're just basically our base computers that we use for everything else in the Sheriff's Office, are very inefficient at this. It can take up to 24 hours for the extracted data to be compiled and, and put into information that we've been using for our investigations. And that is highly inefficient. For instance, if we had a homicide case, it could be the difference between finding our evidence within, say, an hour and a half versus having to wait a day and a half. And in our world, time is, is very important. That could be the difference between being able to get a search warrant and proceed with the case versus having the court determine that that information is now stale, and therefore, we wouldn't be able to move forward. So, the efficiency is, is really important here. We've had to rely on other agencies when speed is a factor, when we need to get information right now. We've had to reach out to Benton County, Wallowa, and others so that we can get that data extracted. Even that comes with an inefficiency because simply driving over, having to wait, having somebody else do it, it may be more time to get that information back from somebody who has the correct capabilities.
And I'm assuming that in that scenario, your case would take a backseat to their case?
That's exactly right. So, we're really reliant on those other agencies and their timeframes as well. And so, what we're trying to do is build essentially a digital forensics lab within Yuma Tilla County. And this is one component. This is the hardware side of things. I'm going to come back in the next fiscal and talk about the software side of things. But this digital forensics lab is really going to bring us in, well, I'm going to say into the 21st century. It dawned on me yesterday, as I was thinking about this presentation, that we are literally one quarter of the way into the 21st century, which was kind of mind-blowing. And we are lagging behind in terms of how we can process digital forensics. We know that the digital age is growing exponentially, and we just need this hardware to bring us up to where we should be, so that we're not letting cases fall through the cracks simply because of that time element. And so, before you, as a request, you purchase an Intel Forensics workstation. This is the same workstation that Wallowa County is using. We used it as a model because it's been working so well for them. We did, you know, kind of look around regionally, and this seems to be the best product to fit what we're trying to build here at UCSO. Purchase price is $19,918 from Serimi Products. Stand for questions.
I had a lot of discussion with Josh on this, and hopefully, one of the things was, I hate seeing this piecemeal work of this. Asking people to make sure that this was the whole package. And yeah, she brought along the other request. My question, and you touched on it a little bit, but I, is, if you look these things up, there seems to be a lot of different manufacturers of these. And I know that you work with IT, and you mentioned Wallowa, but why this brand? I mean, what does it off, and you didn't have to go out for an RFP with the new break stuff, but. Why this brand and why not at some other quotes with it? Just out of curiosity.
So, looking, like I said, I, I'm not the technical guru here, so I did rely on IT and, and my detectives here. I can, I can talk briefly. When I talked to IT, they said, "Yes, the components in this will work for what we're trying to do. We're going to bring this from a 24-hour processing down to about an hour and a half where we compile that data." So, huge efficiencies there. IT agrees that this will fit. In terms of, you know, why this one, sometimes it's, don't reinvent the wheel. We've had partners who've had great success with this, and, and even with some of our cases. And so, that helps kind of guide us. And then, if there's any questions, if Detective Mead wants to, he's got any thoughts on that. Like I said, I relied on them to kind of guide and say.
I was kind of throwing that out there.
This is, this is what we think is best, so.
I mean, we're, we're just looking after the dollars.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's our question.
This is, this is a sticker shock, and I get that. But I, it's not a frivolous ask. It's not something that we went, "Hey, we, we, we're just, you know, out there to spend money." This really is, I can't understate how important digital forensics and digital investigations is in today's investigative world. Cell phone data, think about how often your cell phone's in your pocket walking around. It's collecting data all the time. I went to a homicide conference a year and a half, or two years ago, and they did a case study where they talked about the digital forensics and how it all works together. And, and the timeliness of having that information was crucial in that case. And so, yeah, it's a high cost, but this is going to, I think, last for quite some time to do what it is we're looking to do in terms of building that digital forensics lab and forwarding those investigations in a, in the way that, that is not only, I feel physically responsible because over the grand scheme of things, we're spending a lot of money here, but we're doing it for the benefit of the citizenry and, and getting justice for those victims. But also, just in terms of case management, we can run through cases much faster. Consider. Consider if we had a, an investigation where we seized, say, five cell phones, which is not unreasonable. One investigation, we see, sees five cell phones. That's essentially five days worth of investigative time lost just trying to dump and analyze those five phones. We can do it maybe in a day, a day and a half.
How long, how long is it going to take this to get up and running? When, when, I mean, how long's the length time to get it and then get up and running?
That, I don't know about the time to get it. The quote is here and it's, if I get approval, I'm putting the order in today. But I, I wouldn't imagine more than about six weeks. We are building this kind of forensics lab over at the Stafford Hansel in our new, new remodel area. And so that's still in the works. So I think it's all going to come together about the same time, about the time that that remodel gets done. We should have the equipment and be setting it up and ready to rock and roll. So I'm hopefully within the next couple of months. All of this will be tied together and we'll, we'll be ready to go.
Seen the work that Celebrate did when it first came out, when I was at the sheriff's office and we, I saw some amazing things happen there. So I look forward to this, you know, it's, I know I've heard of the under sheriff saying time and time again, we want to be the premier law enforcement agency in Umatilla County, and I think this is a huge step in that direction, so. And you've, you've used them, right detective?
Yes.
This in, in Walla Walla? And is this something that you're going to be able to put into practice? I want, I want to hear from you. I mean, I, I love the LT, don't get me wrong, but I want to hear from you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Again, I'm Detective Mead, Sheriff's Office. One of my duties obviously is investigating crimes. Another hat that I wear, I'm certified as a digital forensist with Celebrate. So when criminal investigations or cell phones are seized, extracted and analyzed, that happens hardware, software. Speed. Help us address some of the issues that we're running into with modern easiest way I can explain it is using, we're out right now, using old technology to analyze new technology. We don't always, not always able to get all the evidence.
That's a good point. I never thought of that one. But you know, I've seen, I've seen some of the cases break wide open because of this kind of technology, so. I, I look forward to you solving a lot more crimes.
Thank you.
If we do say yes, so.
You guys just brought up something that I guess I shouldn't have asked all along. The black box portion is coming up next, but you made the comment that as soon as we get this with the software, does this operate without the software?
Yes, so I mean, we would be able to use our own software. It's hardware. In the scheme of things. The new software to
That's where I'm saying we're, we're going to be having conversations about that for the next fiscal. We're looking to upgrade. We've been in talks with Celebrate about the next generation of Celebrate because what we have now is coming end of life. And so I know we, we just purchased it in twenty twenty two, but that's how fast technology is changing. And so we'll be coming back with some more information about that software component on the Celebrate side of it, probably in the next month or so, once we get some more data.
Start sounding like our IT department.
Again?
Eric started sounding like our IT department.
You know, they, they have validity to that. Unfortunately, I wish it wasn't the way. I wish, you know, technology in some ways would slow down in our world because it is advancing so fast that it's, it's hard for, for modern law enforcement to keep up. But we're just trying to stay, you know, up with the curve, not necessarily even ahead of the curve, but just stay with the curve so that we can stay relevant in terms of our investigative abilities.
Thanks guys. I'd move for approval of the purchase of the forensic workstation.
It's been moved in second. I do have a question. What about training? You obviously are trained in this. Are there others that will be trained also?
Yes, my partner who's not here today is also certified with Celebrate. Good to go with that. There would be just a little bit of training with the new hardware, particularly specifically. But as far as how the software works and
Right, it's been moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
Faraday, Faraday.
Again, commissioners, appreciate your time. This moves right along with the previous conversation about this digital forensics laboratory we're trying to put together. Modern technology unfortunately is quite easy to wipe remotely. You have an iPhone for any length of time, for quite some time, you've been able to log into your, your iPod account, access your phone. And if, if it gets stolen, you could basically brick your phone, make it useless and wipe all the data off of it, make it completely inaccessible. And unfortunately, today's criminal element knows that very well and has the ability to, when they believe that they're suspected of a crime, their cell phone is seized. Post seizure, they can remote into their, their account and wipe that phone remotely. But that happens through cellular and radio frequency signals. And so what these boxes are, these Faraday boxes block these cell phone signals. So when we seize a device, historically, early on in early cellphone days, the recommendation was power the device off so that you can't access, remotely access that data. Unfortunately anymore, a lot of the new devices, if you power it off, first of all, it might require a passcode that we don't have to get back into the device, which makes it even more difficult to access that information. Also in the background, it could reset or wipe out some of the data that you want in terms of timestamps and, and whatnot. And then refresh from the, the moment that you, you restart the device and it could clear out some, some files through the restart process. And so the, the recommendation now is to not power down the device, but to keep, put it in airplane mode and, and keep it on. And so these, first of all, the one box that we're looking at is a storage box that the deputy would deposit the device into after the seizure, but before the detectives can look at it. It's got power cords in it to keep the phone charged so that it doesn't shut off. Is, it almost looks like if anybody's done some sandblasting, it's got the gloves and it's got the box and you reach in and, and you, you work with your, your piece. It's, it's the same concept. It's in the secure box, the box itself is Faraday, but they've got the gloves that can work with the device in a safe environment where it's free from, from outside radio frequency interference. And so that's what we're looking to do. Again, the next component of this digital forensics lab. And so again, relying on my detectives, they did the late work on this. They went out, found the product that they felt was best for what we're looking to build. This is through Moss Equipment. Total price for those two units is eleven thousand four hundred and forty eight dollars. That would stand with questions?
Two units, one, I'm assuming at the Permiston office, one here in Pendleton?
They will both be in the Permiston office. Again, this is going to be with that, the hardware package that we just approved. It's going to be in the same office. This, this works together for that digital processing, all in one, one space.
Question I have is, going through and looking at, at some of the research on this, they have these pocket envelopes or whatever they call them, there are several different brands of them. But they have envelopes that do the same thing. Now, obviously you can't work in them or, or anything like that, but upon on taking that phone, you put it in there, it does all the same thing as a Faraday box, only you can't work in it or anything. But it gives you time to transport it to, do you guys already have those?
We just purchased some of those, just outright as, as a direct purchase. So that each patrol car will have one of those in their car. So that they seize a device, they can put it in there and then transport from there to the office will be protected. But they don't have the ability to continually power the device.
No, 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 I get that. It's just, I, when I was looking into this, I, my, my thought goes to, well, what happens to the phone between you and I and Permiston?
Yeah, no, we've absolutely thought of that and they just came in yesterday. I've handed them out and so that is, you, you have to, that's a key component we've already planned for.
Okay, thanks.
Answer questions, okay?
I'd move for approval of the black box purchase from Moss Equipment.
It moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you commissioners. I think you're done looking at my mug today.
You guys, please pass on to search and rescue our, our recognition of search and rescue mug.
Absolutely, appreciate that. Thank you.
Outdoor mass gathering ones.
Good morning commissioners. Megan Nowchowski, planning manager for community development. Our office received a request for a license to do an outdoor mass gathering at Crockett Road Lavender Farm. It would be on June twenty first from eleven AM to four PM and their expected attendance is about fifty to sixty people. They provided a summary of their event and I believe Tom, the event host is in the room today if you have additional questions for him. The reason why this request is before the board is because the property is zoned exclusively farm use. And in that zone, an outdoor mass gathering is a license and that authority comes If there are questions for me, I'll let Tom come up and
I do have a couple of questions.
Good morning and thanks for your consideration today. My name's Tom Bider, Milton Free Water. My wife is Louise Dejour. We operate Crockett Road Lavender Farm and just here to answer any questions you might have regarding our application.
Just would you mind giving us your address for the record, please?
Sure, it's five three, six seven one, West Crockett Road, Milton Free Water, Oregon, nine seven eight six two.
I want to comment that I have been to your establishment and it is amazing. I'm always amazed that it sits right there in Milton Free Water. You've done a beautiful job.
Thank you.
And you have a retail shop that's wonderful and just in a great location and I just wanted to comment.
Well, thank you. That means a lot. Thank you.
My question is last year's event?
Yes.
This year, I'm imagining it will even grow greater. What happens next? Gets pretty tight around there.
Yeah, you know, I don't know.
It will, it, I hope that
Yeah, we, we do have a lot of parking on the farm and we can make more when needed. It's kind of served as a fence. They ask to do it at the farm because of the zoning, that's why.
Yeah.
Yes, but they primarily invite their wine club members. They, during the year, they do a whole series of events for the wine club members and this is one of them. And you know, during, right now, we just started blooming. Saturdays get kind of busy. We get visitors to the farm all day, but there's, there's never any one large mass at any one time. You know, a couple of carloads will come, a couple more will come, a couple leave, so it's yeah, it could get bigger. I don't, the way it's promoted, I don't think it would ever turn into like a jackal, jackalot jamboree or something.
But you partner with Service on the, on the event and?
Yes, in fact, it was their idea.
No, that, that's a great event. I'm glad you guys
Thank you. It's a lot of fun. Yeah.
I would move to approve the license for outdoor mass gathering and authorize chair to sign zoning permit twenty five dash one one one.
It moved in second and all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Through mid-July, I'd like to invite you to come out sometime and see what we do.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Hey, we need payable.
Okay, this is payable before the board for approval to the amount in that tons of already been received from the state. So it's authorization to pay.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Public health contract.
Yeah, he's on, yeah.
Good morning commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Morning Joe.
All right, Joe Fumara, Public Health Director for UCO Health. Got a first item here for you this morning. We are, every five years, we need to do a community health assessment and we are kind of on that timeline now. Part of that is a process of collecting both primary and secondary data sources. We're trying to boost up our primary data collection and so we've been talking with Regroup and we're looking to enter into a contract with them to help us do that portion of this. The, the contract amount is for nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the, the total piece that we're asking them to, to assist us with. And the money for that, we're going to use our modernization funding, specifically our program element fifty one dash oh one. And that is a, that is a cost that we submitted in the budget to OHA for the use of those funds and they did approve that on their side. And so we're now before the board asking for approval to enter into the contract and to approve the expense. Happy to answer any questions if you have any. So the, the, the short answer is legislature will eventually pass a, hopefully pass a budget for OHA and modernization funds are part of that. So every, every two years, you know, we, we kind of sit waiting for what, what July one will look like. Our, our current expectation is it will likely be flat funding into the next biennium.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. I like the fact that it's grant funded and doesn't come out of the general fund, so you already answered my question.
Sure.
That's for approval. Second.
It's been moved in seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approval of expense to update graphics on preparedness trailer.
Yes, good morning. So our public health preparedness trailer, I'm, I'm sure you guys have seen it. The, the vinyl covering on it is old, cracking, discoloring, starting to flake off, et cetera. It's, it's also has not been updated with some of the new graphics, including like county logo, et cetera, that, that are now available. So we have some funds through our preparedness, our, our preparedness, public health preparedness program, which is program element twelve for us, which is funding we, we get from OHA. The, I've actually written this into the budget for them for the last two years. This is just the first year. We actually kind of got things all lined up to actually make the change happen. And so this has been approved on the, on the OHA side for, for this project with the funds. We were able to get quotes from a couple of local companies and then we did end up getting some quotes. When I submitted this, we hadn't heard back from some regional folks a little further away. We were just trying to get some additional quotes. But the, our recommendation is, is to go with creative signs here in Pendleton is the lowest quote that was going to do the whole total project. Both the removal of the existing graphics and then the installation of the new ones. I did include, we're still tweaking the graphic itself and, and so there was, there was a couple images I had submitted just so you guys can kind of get a feel for, for where we're going with that. But it is going to include the new county, the new county logo as, as well as our UCO Health logoing. And so I'm, I'm here, our, our, our quote is for eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. That's to get the, the entire thing done. Our current timeline is we do expect this to be done and complete and ready for fair in August.
That was going to be my question was when you hoped to have this done. It all in favor say aye. Motion passes. Okay, approval of computer upgrades purchase. Does it mean Joe?
This is the last one for me today. So we were trying to do some computers, some monitors, docking station upgrades. We are utilizing some of our public health monetization funds, the fifty one dash oh one. We've got listed off here, what we've got slated for this are three laptops, operating systems for that, seven monitors, nine docking stations. Those were the, based on the quotes we received from Umatilla County IT. This is also an item that we had included in our budget to OHA. This is also an item that we had included in our budget to OHA for the utilization of these specific funds. And that was approved on their side and here to, uh, get approval from you guys for the expense amount. Uh, total for the, 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 the package here is $9,030 and 36 cents. Thank you very much.
Okay, fee ordinance amendment. We will now move into, uh, out of our regular meeting into a public hearing and the meeting is not open. Public comment on comprehensive fee ordinance amendment.
Before the board is the annual review of fees by department. Um, there were two departments that are requesting increase in fees. Um, the first one is assessment and taxation, the GIS division. Uh, they wanted to change their, uh, description they have for their data from the monthly basis to quarterly basis. And so basically to be more in line with what they have. And so along with that, it's not really a fee increase, it's more of a change. And then the other one that are coming from, uh, public health, the first one is environmental health. They have a cross-board increase to all of the fees for that division. And the other one is not an increase, but is. Program, um, those fees have a DEQ surcharge to them. DEQ keeps changing that fee. They increased it last year at 117 and they're considering to increase it again, but they don't know what it is. Rather than wait for DEQ to keep changing their minds, um, and finally the fee, what is proposed is just a basic fee for the. Side and then whatever surcharge DEQ has on it will be added to.
That's the reason why those fees went down?
Right, they would stay in 117.
Okay, I wondered what that was, thank you.
And so then whatever their new fee will be added back.
Do we, how, how do we have to post those fees as we part of?
They'll just add them.
Add them, we don't, they don't?
Yeah, that way we don't, you don't have to come back.
That makes sense. Somebody just handed back.
Okay. Online, do we have a question?
Uh, this is, this is Joe, Public Health Director for UCO Health. I, I was just going to specify, um, that, uh, already on, on our side, when, when folks pay, we, we separate out the surcharge on the receipt. So they already see the charge and the surcharge listed separately. Um, and so this kind of just does that in ordinance because we're, we're hearing that's going to go up 3% again late summer, but. Until it does, we, we don't really, really don't know. I, I, I am for, uh, and for this year, we raised up, we raised our septic fees last year. And I'm, I'm trying to, we're, we're, I, I would like to not raise them again this year. But. It, it goes up and down. Uh, uh, applications are down a little bit right now from what we had seen in the past. But that, it's kind of a lagging piece that, that goes up and down, but we have to pay the DEQ surcharge. Like we, we pay that to them. And so we want to make sure we're at least passing that through so it's not eating into our budget. Yep.
Any other comments or questions? We will now move out of the public hearing, back into our regular meeting. Anyone else have any public comment? Maybe it was the thinking now. All right, does anybody else have any public comments? All right, we'll move out of our public hearing, back into regular meeting for any discussion.
I'd move for approval of ordinance number.
That was first reading, oh, first reading, sorry.
We're just going to schedule it for the second meeting and that would be for the second.
Okay, recently we'll schedule for the 18th of June.
Do we need a motion on that? I have the second reading of ordinance 2025-07 at the next Board of Commissioners meeting, which is June 18th.
Hey, it's been moved in segment. All in favor, say aye.
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 Want me to?
Health grants.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, the Health Committee met, um, last week and elected Bobby Corey as the chair. The two recommendations coming back, shoot.
Oh, but there's two separate ones.
So Helix, uh, the two, the grants that were approved by the committee are the Helix School District for 102, 354. Uh, that's the, on the, a, a science, uh, portion rebuilding renovation. That's just portion of the overall expense. City of Helix, um, continues to work on Greasewood pre, pre flooding. And there's this $50,000 which will assist, um, Kyle and the city on, uh, funds for matching grants. So I would move for approval of the health. Undue.
It's been moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
The next.
Board appointment.
That's, Joe, the board, new board appointments. Um, Jerry Turgerson has resigned, um, long, long, uh, serving. And Bobby Corey is eligible and willing to serve and also was elected the president. So we're doing this kind of post meeting. So I would move to accept the application of Bobby Corey for the health.
And moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Um, SB 1153.
I think everybody here has been up to speed on that.
Yeah.
That, Doug, to put that on the agenda, uh, because.
Glad you did, you beat me to it, by the way.
Uh, because of the need to get this done this morning. Uh, and thank you Doug for pushing that through. Um, I would move for approval of the opposition letter to Senate Bill 1153.
I'd leave second, uh.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Uh, any? Any comments for good of the order?
What about the registry? Yeah, I can give a quick update. Uh, so we had our, uh, board retreat, annual board retreat for the AOC, uh, Board of Directors, Association of Northern Counties. Uh, Monday and Tuesday, and we started Sunday night and we held it at Sisters, uh, in Sisters, Oregon this year. Uh, it was very well attended, it was. We thought, we had, uh, we heard from Dr. Tim Rassulti with the High Performance Leadership Academy. And he gave, uh, about an hour and a half presentation. Uh, and then we also had Salam Nour, who was our facilitator. And we talked about the roles, you know, what hat are you wearing? Are you wearing your county commissioner hat for your county versus your hat as a board member for the Association of Northern Counties? Uh, I thought, you know, we had, uh, great fellowship, we got to visit with one another. I thought it was a really good event. You wanted to say anything about it?
I did, I, I thought it was very well done. I. You know, once again, every time we go to something like this, I'm always grateful that we're in Umatilla County. Because you hear everybody else's. And we don't have half the problems that a lot of counties do. So I'm very, very grateful. Great conference, yeah, John did a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Meeting adjourned.